We will begin the Wednesday, May 13th, Joint Meeting Rules and Open Government Committee Committee of the whole. I see we're joined by Vice Mayor Jones, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Camus, Councilmember Ransing. Let's see here. I know we have two additional council members here. Yes, so we do have a forum. Everyone wants present. We begin with the review of the final agenda, the 19. And I believe there's an ad sheet that has the motion to consider two items, one for mental health this month, and one relating to the agreement with San Clara County for cost of food distribution. We'll begin with a review on pages five and six.
This is Tony. My computer's frozen, so I can't share the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Good luck with that. All right, pages seven and eight. Are there any changes there? Pages nine and 10. Pages 11 and 12. Are there any changes? Pages 13 and 14. Page, pages 15 and 16. Dave, what do you think? Should we be starting this one early?
I would concur to that, yes.
So maker of motion might consider an 11:00 AM start.
Motion to approve, along with the ad sheet.
But the.
That includes the mental health awareness sponsored district event and the agreement with Santa Clara County for distribution of food necessities.
And second, I'm assuming that includes the 11 o'clock start time.
And includes, yes, 11 o'clock start time. Awesome.
Great, thank you. Larry Baikman?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. As this will be, you'll be nicely talking about digital inclusion issues on this, on this agenda. I thank you for that. And you know, to some of the most important things, we're entering our second stage of this pandemic now. You know, I really have to ask and how, what can be, you know, real good accountability practices of ourselves? And that's what you're doing next week, and I thank you for that. And it's just, you know, you have a nice way to clear the air sometimes. And I just, I hope we make commitments to do that a lot. And I'm really for measure T public oversight to be a broadened approach this summer and ways that the community can have a real organized way to discuss issues with, with yourselves as government. And to really be working on that stuff, you know, the importance of what, you know, the technology accountability ordinance, you know, was designed, you know, for better relationships and better communication. And, you know, to really, to really respect that at this time, I think can accomplish a lot for ourselves. And so good luck in your efforts and your work. And I guess that's about it for myself. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baikman. There's a caller who is using the caption call in user. The device that's allowing you to hear as you're calling in, that way you won't get the feedback. Call and user one, you want to try that again? Okay, call and user one, your hand has gone down. So unless I see your hand go back up, I'm going to assume that you didn't wish to speak on this item. All right, the hand has not gone back up. So we'll come back to this item. All in favor on Councilmember Rans's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any. Okay, that passes unanimously. We have no council meeting on the 26th of May. We have a, on D1, a request for a setting of a council meeting on August 4th.
Mayor, this is Rick. I, I had a short memo attached to the item. This item came up as, as a result of the lawsuit involving the registrar voters. We received the court decision Friday night, and it was, so it was after the rules committee last Wednesday. That's why we were asking the committee to consider it now as an urgency item. And so the committee needs to have a vote first in these four votes to determine whether it wants to hear the item or not.
Okay, so first we'll consider when that we want to hear this item. Is there a motion or a comment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. I'm going to see if any attendees want to speak. They don't. All right, on that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can now consider that item. That's unanimous. And with regard to the addition of August 4th, can I just add one consideration? Certainly, I'll support this. But it seems to me since nobody's going on vacation presumably, and we're all going to be conducting meetings by Zoom anyway. I'm not wishing this on anyone, but should staff need counsel to get together to vote on something over the summer, it shouldn't be hard for us to be able to set that date. And I just want to sort of encourage Dave to, to consider that flexibly. Because we're not going anywhere, and we can all be within Zoom reach.
We appreciate that, Mayor. And what you will see at rules next week actually is the normal item that comes forward that sets the council agenda for the next period. But understood that this need had some urgency around it, and appreciate what you're saying about July. You know, I think, yeah, so we can kind of think through that.
Okay.
And there I can add that a special meeting can be set on 24 hours' notice. So if it, if it's something that needs to be done quickly, there's an ability to do that, assuming council members can be found. This is to set a regular meeting, though. This would be your first regular meeting in August.
Right, okay.
And, and you typically, as the city manager indicated, it comes with the, the whole six month. But there's the reason to bring it forward now is we're in the process of having a meet and confer session with the county to determine the scheduling and costs, ultimately, costs of the count. And later we can push out the, the date for the final count. The court order currently says June 23rd. But if we can push that out, it would save overtime costs, and as a result, would reduce the, the cost of the count to the city. So we recommend approval. And here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Davis, second from Vice Mayor. Hey, Tony, would you like to have a roll call vote?
Sure, Ariness?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Camus? Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
And Camus, you were muted, but I think you said yes.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, all good. We got everybody. Great, thank you. Now, we're under the public record. Checking, I believe, Mr. Baikman would like to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. A short speech. I wrote three public letters that speak to this, to these issues I speak about today. As we are entering a second stage of this pandemic, I hope we are considering, that government can be considering how to be open in how to describe short-term and long-term economic packages of the next year. And to learn how to create a public safe space where we can all talk about thoughts and ideas openly and simply, simply without competition. How do we maintain economic traditions without forcing ourselves into undue burden, debt, and actual pain? Respecting traditions is one thing, but I hope we can be open to at least short-term creative ideas that can be of help and relief to all of us. Thank you. You know, I'm trying to practice my words from yesterday that, you know, we've got a long way to go with this, with the economic ramifications of the pandemic. And I hope yourselves can explain, explain the possibilities and what's possible to the public for the short term and the long term. And I think you'll get good answers. I don't think you'll get massive pushback. You'll just get debate, and you'll get, you know, honest questions. And I feel we're at a time we have to really be open to, you know, really different ways of thinking for at least the short term, to really get over the financial hump of things at this time. And I just hope we can all be open to that as a community and work towards those things as a community. And, you know, I really want to address how technology, we got to be careful of it and wary of it, and that the responsible practices that I'm a part of, you know, it's a way to work towards that. And it needs to be taken seriously and work, you know, as a community on it. And I hope we can do all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Baikman. All right, back to the committee. Is there a motion?
Motion to note and file.
Second.
Is there any objection to that notion, motion rather? Hearing no objection. That motion passes on E public record. So we're on to item F1, which is an appointment to the VIBA Advisory Committee.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Are there any objections to that motion? Hearing no objections, that passes also. We're going on to G1, this is the consent calendar relating to Affordable Housing Month.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Are there any, Mr. Baikman?
Hi. Is this, is this item have to do with, with overall housing questions at this time?
The approval of the Affordable Housing Month. It's a, it's an event sponsored by Councilmember Prowl.
Oh, well, that, that's very nice of him. And I wanted to politely remind of the many bills that are going through California State Assembly and the Senate at this time that are trying to deal with the, you know, the long-term issues of how there can be debt relief and mortgage relief. And there's some interesting beginnings. And, you know, I, you know, I'm a flaky, you know, young guy. And so I really believe there can be a system that we can be, you know, full debt relief can be established. And how to, that has to be the goal. And, you know, we're slowly inching towards that, and the steps we take are important. And as long as we're progressing towards that, that's what counts at this time, and, and to have that mindset. And so they're doing some work at the California state level that I invite everyone to look into. It's, it's good, good stuff. And how do we better develop that? Because people really are not responsible for what has happened with this pandemic. And it hurts that they have to foot the bill. And it, it's painful. And I wish there could be ways to solve this. They shouldn't have to be paying for any of this sort of debt. And it's the short-term things that I hope can be, you know, help to work out at this time and, and to make a clean slate and start of how to, you know, start again, basically. And so I thank you for your time, and good luck in all of our effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any objection to the passage of the motion relating to item G1A? I'm hearing no objection. That passes then. We're on to item two, which is the zoning code amendments, title 20. Councilmember Jimenez on the line? Okay.
This is Lucas Ramirez, who I work for, for the council member, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Is this Lucas Ramirez?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Welcome. Is there anything you want to say before we launch into questions?
Sure. So as I think, so first, thank you, Mayor, and members of the role committee. I think you will recall that this memo was intended to speak to some of the items in what is, what is now 10.1A on the land use consent calendar for the council meeting next Tuesday. And just very briefly going through the recommendations. Recommendation two is intended to address or seek clarification on which zoning districts, the new uses that state law requires cities to allow in certain districts. To clarify which zoning districts these uses must be allowed in. And my understanding, I know planning staff is, is available to speak to this. My understanding is that a supplemental memorandum will be made available that will address some of the, the questions that the council member had. And Roseland, you probably will know better than I what, what, whether additional zoning code amendments are necessary in order to, to implement AB 2162 and AB 101 specifically. And I'm happy to speak to, to the questions that the council member had, if that would be helpful. Item three, or recommendation 3A, would simply add transitional housing as, as a use in the use tables. Right now, it exists as a defined use, and the, the referenced ordinance includes transitional housing as well as permanent supportive housing. But currently, neither of those uses are found in the use tables. And the council member had recognized that AB 2162 would, would require, or I guess the staff is intending to implement that law by explicitly listing permanent supportive housing as a permitted use in the appropriate zoning districts. But we have not done, we have not done this with transitional housing. So the recommendation simply would be to list transitional housing as, or in the use tables in the zoning districts that the municipal code currently allows transitional housing in. 3B, my understanding is this is the, the, the item that would require more work from staff. But it, it comes out of an experience that we learned from Life Moves, which was, I believe, trying to add some additional beds to an existing shelter. We learned that there were some challenges associated with doing so. I believe Life Moves has submitted a letter to this effect. But this would direct staff to return with some modifications to the zoning code to streamline the, the addition of beds in existing shelters, and specifically non, or legal non-conforming shelters in industrial zoning districts. As you'll see in the council member's memo, with zoning code modifications made last year, several shelters that were legally constructed in industrial zoning districts have become non-conforming as emergency shelter no longer is allowed in those zoning districts. And for recommendation four, you know, consistent with the council and the city's goals to increase the availability of emergency shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing, the council member is simply seeking to see if there are additional modifications that could be made to identify any obstacles. And again, my understanding is that staff will speak to some of these efforts in their supplemental memorandum.
Okay, thank you. So we see the response from, I believe it's either Roseland or somebody else, oh, from Michael Brio, excuse me, that items two, A, B, and C are green lighted. And some remaining items are yellow lighted. Is that fair, Roseland?
Yeah, and if I could, before Roseland jumps in, Mayor, I just wanted to, because we have a lot of items on the agenda today. So I think, you know, just stepping back a little bit in terms of how we're approaching these things, you know, we're, in addition to the green, yellow, red process, you know, we're looking to see if it's, if it's COVID-related, you know, if it's, if it's COVID-related in, in response to the current emergency, you know, we're inclined to move forward with those items. And if it's not, then I think we're, we're putting it through the same level of review that we normally do with the green, yellow, red. We don't see this as COVID-related. And so this, this has been put through our normal process of evaluating, evaluating workload. And, and so Roseland can now speak to if she wants the, kind of the green, red, yellow approach, and why you see the, the recommendations that we're making.
Yes, thank you, Dave. So staff has had the opportunity to review Councilmember Jimenez's memorandum. And as Lucas stated, items two, A, B, and C, we have recommended as a green light. And actually, we are drafting a supplemental memo that should be issued by Friday for the item for, for Tuesday's council meeting. Item 3A is also a green light. 3B is the item that will require additional staff analysis in terms of looking at expanding emergency shelters in industrial areas. A couple of key things would be impacts on existing industrial users in these areas, as well as we think that we would want to do some outreach, obviously, to industrial users and, and really to the community at large. So that's the reason for recommending a yellow light for that item. And then item four, we have recommended a green light. Actually, we have recently established a housing team in our citywide planning section that their main responsibility is to facilitate housing, including permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, and shelters. And we'll be coordinating with the Housing Catalysts in the Office of Economic Development on any future considerations or policy changes to facilitate those uses.
Great. Any comments or motion?
Mayor, I have a question. If these are all green light, except 3B, does it go to council for consideration on the, on the ordinance item? Or are staff saying they're already, they're, they're already working on these items?
So staff is not currently working on item 3B. It's not currently in our work plan. And we do have obviously several other council priority items that we're working on. So that's why we have recommended it as a yellow light.
So that, but that means it goes to priority setting.
Right, that's correct.
We can do that as a motion here to send 3B directly to priority setting. The other items, they, do they need to go to council?
Well, I think what Roseland is saying, and what I'm hearing is that we're, the other items, they're green light, and we're able to pretty much integrate them through a supplemental memo with the item that's already scheduled for council, I think is what I'm hearing.
Okay, so that doesn't need a motion?
It does.
It does. The, the, the item still has to go to council for, for direction. I mean, the, the memo seeks to counsel direction to staff, and staff is saying they can do it. But it still requires council to say, we want you to go do it.
Okay, so the motion would be to direct, to, to send item 3B to priority setting and to send all the other items to council?
The next week, yes.
Next, okay.
Second. Okay, any comments, Councilmember Camus?
Oh, no, I had a similar question. I'm not necessarily, yeah, I think the item 3B was a little more troubling to me than everything else, but, but I'm glad we're going this direction. Thank you.
All right, on the motion, Tony, could you roll call vote?
Ariness?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Camus?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye. Okay, we're on to item three is the fee cap on food delivery services. I see Councilmember Jeff is with us.
Yes, Mayor, so this is coming back from last week, so I have no new comments, just here to answer any questions. Essentially, I think I've heard stories from small businesses, restaurants in particular, how they're, they're having a harder time because a lot of these delivery fees are taking a huge kind of portion of, of their profit. And, and right now, everyone is using the food delivery companies. So I'm just fearful and mindful of the impact on small businesses. Of course, I'm also mindful of the impact on the food delivery services as well. We want to make sure that they're able to provide the service of delivering food. But I think it's something that the council should debate and see where we land on that.
And then we'll come right back. Go ahead, Rick. Did you want to jump in?
No, I was just going to say, we, we, we're just, I was going to report back on the legal side of this, but if you want to take comment first. uh the legal side of this, but if you want to take comment first, that's fine.
Why don't we take comment? We'll come right back to you. Uh Mariah Ray?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Maria Ray. I'm the public policy at partnerships lead at DoorDash, which also includes the Caviar brand. I hope my comments today can shed light on who we are, how we operate, and the services we make available to San Jose residents. The core of our platform is logistics. We connect customers, restaurants, and couriers through our website and mobile app. And our platform enables restaurants to reach customers online and offer delivery, which is something most of our restaurant partners had never been able to do before. And we've taken a lot of steps in light of COVID to provide relief to restaurants. Namely, we've eliminated commissions, which is the fee that we collect from businesses on all pickup orders to the end of May. We've eliminated commissions for restaurants that are new to DoorDash or Caviar for thirty days. We've instituted a zero dollar delivery fee for customers on Saturdays to help restaurants attract new customers and keep delivery affordable. And largely, we've reduced commissions by fifty percent for local mom and pop restaurants, those with five or fewer locations through the end of May, which has been the savings of for roughly seven hundred and fifty restaurants in San Jose. We've done a lot for couriers as well. Those are the delivery workers, the independent contractors who deliver on our platform. We've provided PPE free of charge. They have access to two weeks of earnings um if they're affected by COVID nineteen. And Dashers in San Jose are earning at or around twenty seven dollars per active hour, including tips when they're on our platform. We're also very, very proud of our partnership with the city, the health trust, and local restaurants to power delivery of fourteen thousand meals to seniors and homeless residents in San Jose alone. And I'll just close with this. For our platform to work, it has to work for restaurants. And so we're open to constructive dialogue. I'd welcome questions about our fee structure. We have grave concerns, however, about this proposal because we feel like it would have massive unintended consequences to consumers, couriers, and even the very restaurants that the proposals are aiming to help. Again, happy to take any questions diving into our business model, our fee structure, and anything else anyone would like to know about.
Thank you. All right. Uh Nila Block?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council members. Um just back again this week, uh reiterating our support of a council member Jeff's memo. From last week, um we're looking at any and all opportunities to offer relief to our hard hit downtown hospitality businesses at this time. Um won't say anymore at this moment, just wanted to support the memo and uh thank you all for your efforts.
Thanks, Dave. All right, uh back to committee, uh Rick and then Dave.
Yeah, I uh I'll address the legal issues, and I think the city manager staff may have some issues uh uh on the policy questions. The uh we did look at uh Seattle and San Francisco. Uh both have issued emergency orders, so uh the city manager is the city's emergency services officer, has the ability to issue an order that would accomplish this if if uh be so wished. Um or the council can adopt an urgency ordinance and the alternative to um to to enact this as well. There's some concerns, just I think operationally, uh the um yeah, this this calls for a ten percent if if PPP or protective wear is provided, fifteen percent where it's not uh in terms of the cap. I think we're really not staffed to keep track of that. I think that would be a logistically a very difficult if the council wanted to go there or the manager. And so both uh both San Francisco and uh Seattle have the same cap. I think it's fifteen percent, but they don't have a requirement on the on the PPP, and I just think logistically it's difficult. But that would be something for the council if this moves forward for the council to consider if if they need be. Um the um the rationale obviously is that the fees are eating into the profits of the the restaurants, particularly small restaurants, and you need to have some kind of backup for that, but um uh the rationale, but um in terms of evidence, but the the it's doable, it's been done. Again, uh there's two ways to go and uh with that, I'll I'll, I think, Dave or Angel, somebody has the
Yeah, thanks, Rick, and and Angel is there to kind of help with this. So just kind of going through our review, certainly COVID related, so it's not a, we're not, you know, kicking it to anywhere else. I think it merits the discussion. Um I, we certainly had not identified this as an issue for uh an emergency order coming out of the EOC. Um so hadn't seen the uh the the, I guess, the need to to issue that type of order. Um weren't seeing the issues associated with this, so um you know, it's up, I think, council to decide. I I think Angel, I think there we can kind of add more context about what potential unintended consequences could be from this. And I I think that's probably the the biggest concern. Um so Angel, anything more you want to add there?
Yeah, Dave and and uh and Mayor and council members, um you know, from a from a food distribution perspective, uh we we definitely have engaged both restaurants and delivery operators. And and quite frankly, more more recently have been working, have been relying on delivery operators, especially as it relates to reaching uh you know, hard to serve seniors that are isolated. The the one uh red flag or concern that comes up for me is is would this have the unintended consequence of hindering our ability to reach uh vulnerable individuals in outer parts of San Jose? Uh I do know that with the San San Francisco ordinance, they're they are having difficulty getting food distributed to the Treasure Island area, for example. We're hearing uh you know, uh some uh some feedback around that. And so that would be a concern. Um you know, uh given that we have worked with both restaurants and delivery operators, you know, I I think from a staff perspective, you know, perhaps a a a more intentional uh discussion between the two of them is is more appropriate prior to jump into an ordinance. But uh uh obviously, we haven't analyzed this from every perspective, from the full impact around restaurants nor delivery operators, but just coming from that perspective around food distribution, uh I I sure would hate to have anything really interrupt that because then the default would be that then the city would have to pick that up. And then that creates another kind of fiscal burden on the city. Um so anyway, just uh some additional food for thought and context uh as uh stand to your discussion.
Thank you. Uh councillor Jeff, did you want to respond at all?
Yeah, sure. So to Rick's point, I I I completely understand that, and I'll even flag another potential legal issue is uh for whether uh companies can can be asked to provide PPE for independent contractors. Because one of the kind of if you use, if you're still using that prong about whether you're an employer or independent contractor, one of the things is independent contractors provide their their own tools. Uh but I in recognition of that, I I drafted it the way I drafted it anyway, simply because I think we should be encouraging companies to provide for PPE. And I didn't expect, I would I would assume that no company would say, no, we don't want to provide that. So everyone would just fall under the fifteen percent anyway. Uh so in my thinking, I I just wanted to encourage uh companies to provide it. And uh I think that the speaker was from DoorDash. I've I've actually spoken with her previously. And I I I know that DoorDash provides it and and but other companies might not. I think recently, this is last week, we we heard uh there was a story in San Jose Inside about another competitor that that does not provide them. So I I do think the issue bears council consideration. Um as for this concern about not being able to provide service to the outside, the suburb areas of San Jose, I am sensitive to that, and I'm open to doing what we can to ensure that it doesn't cut into the uh the business model. But I will say this, I I think that it is um, we we live in a time where a lot of consumer expectations are being are being skewed. I I think that um any of us today, if we were to buy something online because we're afraid of going to the store or places and we don't want to stand in line, we would expect two day delivery or one day delivery, and sometimes we we would expect it for free. And the truth is, there are costs involved in that, whether it's US Postal Service or UPS or FedEx or whoever, there are costs involved in that. But the more that companies like Amazon and others are able to subsidize the cost of that, we feel that that is a free service, and that's not the actual reality. And in food delivery, if if DoorDash, like the speaker said, is paying twenty seven dollars an hour to a driver to make a delivery, well, and we as a consumer are able to get that for however much it costs to, you know, ten bucks or or eight bucks. Somewhere along the way, that cost is being subsidized. And it is my contention that a lot of that is coming off the backs of the profits of the small independent restaurants or the restaurant chains. And I I think that's that's not quite right in my thinking. I think I think that if we want food delivered to our homes, we should be willing to pay the cost to get the delivery there. Because it's it's, you know, we can go out and get it ourselves, or we, you know, get dressed, comb our hair and go do it. Or we have somebody drive it and risk their lives or their health potentially to bring it to us. Uh and so that cost should be transparent, and we should understand that we are using a a quote, in my mind, a luxury service to have food delivered to our home. In in the case of Angel, when he's talking about food delivery to seniors and vulnerable populations, I completely agree with that. And I would think that even if the cost on the consumer were were raised somewhat, um the the governor during this time has that program for seniors where they can potentially get, what, sixty something dollars a day? And I think that, you know, comes out in the wash, I think. But again, I'm not insisting that what I propose verbatim uh makes it through council. I I do think that we should have something, whether that's a fifteen percent or something else, or some other exceptions for suburbs and further areas out in San Jose. I I'm open to that discussion, but I do think the the issue should be addressed somehow. I'll yield.
Appreciate it. I appreciate the thinking, and certainly I'm very receptive to the proposal. Um but I also want to be sensitive to some of the concerns that were raised, um particularly Angel's. And we have seen where this is having an effect. Um Angel's right about Treasure Island, there are other parts that city that simply don't get deliveries as a result. Um and I I think I'm guessing if we spent enough time sitting around the table with folks, we'd probably want to come up with at least a two tier zone or something like that, that essentially lift the limit. Um if someone's making a delivery down to Coyote or Silver Creek, and it's gonna be an hour trip, um you know, there and back or, you know, it's, obviously, there's there's much more involved in the delivery than if it's a few blocks away. So I I would like to suggest a a way of moving forward because I know staff that is involved in this is also the staff that is busiest right now, delivering two point six million meals a week to to families in our s- in our region. That if we could take this up again in a week or two and give us time to meet with industry representatives, I'd be happy to lend my own team, uh my staff to work with yours, councillor Jeff and anybody else who wants to join in to see if we can maybe come back with something that is a little more nuanced, that ensures that we don't cut off food delivery completely to some parts of our city. If you'd be receptive to that, certainly something I'd be more than willing to to take up, and then we can bring something back.
Yeah, sure. I I'm, if that's what the the rules committee likes, then then that's what I'll I'll live with. If I push back the week, but yeah, I'm we we can definitely do more um discussions and whatnot, but I I do hope to get this through sooner than than later.
Yeah, understood. Uh so what do my colleagues think? Uh I'm sorry, I had the wrong panel up. Uh council member, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I I will make the motion to defer this, but since we have Ms. Ray um here with us now, um I wanted to ask her a few questions. If we can make her available.
Okay, Mariah.
I'm here, thank you.
Oh, all right. Mariah, um talk a little more about the business model. I know that it's public information that services like yours currently are not profitable or haven't achieved profitability. And can you, um for what you can provide us, can you walk us through the 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 business model in terms of the cost structure and the fee structure? And then also address uh the question that came up um about transferring some of those costs to the consumer? So can you walk us through that, please?
Yes, thank you for the question by Smear Jones. Commissions help pay for a wide range of services that we provide restaurants. And our business model is to partner with restaurants who enter into it an agreement with us. It's a business to business contract where we provide a set of services for a fee that they pay us. And that fee can be paid as a percentage of the subtotal or based on how the restaurant chooses to use our service. It could be paid as a flat fee. Um I'll expand on the second example really quickly. There are some restaurants who have their own channels. They have their own app, they have their own website. They drive customers to their website through their own marketing, and they contract with us to do what is arguably the most labor intensive part, which is actually fulfilling the delivery order. Those restaurants pay us a flat fee. And I raise that example because it makes it inherently difficult to impose a percentage price cap when we're charging a flat fee, right? But in the instance where we are charging a commission fee, which is a percentage of the subtotal, that fee goes towards paying a variety of things. It pays for our insurance costs, our credit card processing fees for each order. That can be three to four percent of the order subtotal alone, so just carve that out from the percentage that we collect. That's just going straight out the door. It goes towards advertising and marketing costs. It goes towards the thousands of customer support agents that we employ to respond to requests from customers, delivery drivers, and the restaurants themselves. It goes to the cost of building and maintaining a website and our app. It goes towards the hundred million dollars of commission relief that I outlined earlier, including the fifty percent commission cut. So our revenues are really coming from the restaurants who pay us commissions and from consumers who pay us a service fee. So what we've found is that in this time, consumers are incredibly price sensitive, but they want to support their local restaurants. So restaurants have told us that the most important thing we can do is to subsidize delivery for customers because that's what's getting their orders to come into the door. That's what's getting them to be able to keep their lights on, frankly. So we really have concerns with a notion that raising consumer fees is actually the way out for platforms like DoorDash to be able to manage a a price fix. Because frankly, customers will stop ordering. You know, we've modeled this extensively. We know that raising consumer fees leads to customers ordering less frequently, but also ordering in lower amounts. And those are both things that the restaurants who are hurting the most don't want to see.
And going back to the um the issue that was raised about San Francisco and uh a reduction in the service area, what what was the thought process behind um the it, the enactment of their ordinance and the reduction of the service area? Was it strictly cost based, or was there other considerations? What what went into that thought process?
Yeah, so I'll say that, you know, we are one platform in a pretty crowded field of a few providers. And it's true that one of the platforms opted quite publicly to reduce their service area as a result of the price cap. Because, uh you know, I can only imagine they made a calculated decision that it was no longer affordable to be able to continue making deliveries to that remote part of the city. Um I will say that, you know, that exists probably even more prominently in a city like San Jose, which has, you know, pretty far flung districts, um you know, areas where there aren't restaurants, um areas that are harder to reach. And I'll say that in response to COVID nineteen, I mentioned that our biggest driver for merchant um relief initially was driving volume. What we did initially at a cost to ourselves is actually expand service areas at the start of COVID nineteen because that's something that's within our control. We can take the addressable market for a restaurant, and we can expand it ourselves within our app, within our algorithm, and allow for restaurants to reach more customers and drive more sales to them. And frankly, to allow more customers to access the restaurants that they want to order from, given that restaurants were actually closing their doors. So we did that early on, and I'm, you know, afraid to think through what we would consider doing if a permanent, if a if a temporary and potentially permanent cap were, you know, considered. We would have to think through some of those decisions to expand those service areas to the more far flung districts. Um and and, you know, frankly, we would have to rethink some of the other things we've done at our own cost to be able to provide relief to restaurants at this time in San Jose.
So I'm gonna ask you a a very obvious question. If you're losing money on every transaction or most transactions, is that a sustainable business model if your ability to um increase your fees are are capped?
I think it probably goes without saying that everyone's hurting a lot in light of COVID. And so at this time, we continue to be uh, you know, a a business that is not making profit. And we actually are continuing to to, you know, uh force force self injury. Um as I stated, with the the commission cuts that we've imposed on our own selves. I think that you're, it's fair to ask a question, is this sustainable? I think that a lot of us are coming to terms with what we can do in a sustainable fashion, how long we can do it. The fee cuts that I mentioned, the, you know, zero dollar delivery, those things are intended to be temporary measures because we simply can't afford to survive if we are to continue to do these things. So while we have imposed these measures voluntarily, it's in order to uphold the strength of our entire ecosystem. it's in order to uphold the strength of our entire ecosystem. We are nowhere without restaurants thriving and surviving. We are nowhere without dashers wanting to have earning opportunities on our platform, continuing to log on, seeing wages that they want to be able to earn and accepting deliveries. So we need to maintain the health of our ecosystem for people to, people to be able to be fed. So I don't, I don't see a future in which these measures can continue. These measures are very painful. They're costing us a hundred million dollars across all of our markets combined. But I do feel like, you know, we are, we would like to enter into constructive conversation and talk about what it means to take these measures on and talk about what detrimental impact it would have for these measures to be taken on in a more permanent fashion. Because it would be severely detrimental to our business.
Thank you, Mariah. There's an old, uh, business adage that if you're losing money on every transaction, you can't make it up on volume. So that's, uh, my major concern about this whole proposal is that we're putting, uh, businesses and companies in a position where, one, they're having investors subsidize another business partner or business entity, as well as we're putting, we're creating and tinkering with their business model where they're not able to even break even, alone, make, make a profit. So I'm going to make a motion to, uh, defer this for, how many, uh, weeks did you want to, uh, see Mayor?
Can we, can we take it two weeks?
Weeks. I'll make a motion to defer this for two weeks.
Is this to defer to council for two, like to go to council?
To rules.
Yeah.
Back to rules.
Okay, there's a second from Councilmember Renus. Uh, Councilmember Camus?
Yeah, so I, I, I have similar concerns. I think most of the restaurants that I have talked to are actually benefiting because this is, uh, the only avenue pretty much available to them during COVID. And without, uh, these business partners, a lot of these business, businesses would die. I mean, they would just go out of business. So to me, it seems that, uh, this could be, I mean, I don't mind discussing it, but this could be punishing the very, the very hand that feeds you, like biting the very hand that feeds you. I think that, that, uh, businesses right now, I don't know if, um, the, Mariah is still on the line here, but nobody's forced to get into DoorDash. Nobody is forced to use DoorDash to, to, as, as a voluntary application. If you have your own business, you don't have to use this, right?
This is Maria. Yes, that's right. No, no problem. Restaurants have a choice to join our platform. They can also leave our platform at will.
Okay, so if they didn't like the costs or if they think that they were being gouged, they can go to another carrier or hire their own delivery person, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, no, I, I, we know, I, I want to hear evidence of why it's needed. You know, you know, I want to hear from a business if, if LUN has it. I, I, you know, the only reason I want to bring it back is to, to hear from any businesses that are saying, hey, I need this, uh, thing to happen because I'm not hearing that we need these, uh, regulations. And I, I don't know if this question is for staff. How would we enforce such regulations? Are, are we going to get into the, going into people's businesses and is it complaint-driven? Or what are your thoughts on how something like this could be enforced?
Well, I think it would be a complaint-driven system if, if the, if the world knows the fees are capped. I mean, the restaurants really would be the ones that, uh, would, uh, have to track that and complain if, to the extent that the fees are excessive. You know, I, and again, I think this is, if, if, if the motion passes, if the mayor is going to get information that in San Francisco, the, the, these were not ordinances passed by the Board of Supervisors. Uh, this was an order issued by, in Maryland and Brea, uh, in, in, in San Francisco's case. And it really was, there was a lot of lobbying by the restaurant industry to, to accomplish this. So, um, I think the, it's, it's good to get the factual basis and factual evidence to, to determine need and, and where you want to go.
Yeah, no, I would like to hear from anybody in the restaurant industry, quite frankly. I, I want to hear evidence that a regulation is needed before we go into regulating. And so, and so that, you know, I'm hoping that that is what comes back, uh, in two weeks' time. Not just the regulation, but I want to, I want to hear that there's a need for regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Renus?
Uh, thank you. So I, um, also like to, uh, when you, when this comes back, I'd like to, uh, hear a little bit more of a breakdown. And is it Marie, Maria, Mariah? No, I got it wrong. Say your name again.
It's Maria.
Maria. So Maria, I'd like to hear a little bit more. I, I appreciate the breakdown that you gave, uh, uh, Vice Mayor. I'd just like to know a little bit more of the breakdown on that gig worker because it was all, uh, part of, uh, the credit card fee and the overall administrative fee. And my concern is, what is this going to drive, um, uh, DoorDash and others like you to do to wages in order to create your own profit if there's a cap? And if there's an unintended consequence on gig workers. Personally, I not, I don't use any food delivery because I, especially during COVID, because I think if I'm not willing to, uh, take that risk to go get that food, then, um, I shouldn't be cooking. I shouldn't ask somebody else to take that risk for me. So I, you know, we go and get the food ourselves, um, uh, straight from the restaurant. And so I admire that you, um, are all doing this and at a risk, uh, financial risk to yourselves, to keep the food going, uh, to places that are difficult to get to. So I appreciate that effort. Could you just share a little bit more in terms of what the breakdown is for, for those, uh, dashers that you call them?
Thank you, Councilmember, for your question. Um, and I'll, I'll just share anecdotally that, you know, I looked right before this meeting and noted that Mexicolino, DeLok Vegetarian Cuisine, Rojo Indian Cuisine, these are all restaurants in your, in your district that have all benefited from our fifty percent commission relief program. So if you were to ask, you know, Councilmember Camus is asking for restaurants to raise their hand and say we need this. If you were to ask restaurants in your district, particularly the ones that are on DoorDash that have five or fewer locations, which is our definition of, you know, mom and pop, those are restaurants that have already received a fifty percent reduction and are probably very happy with third-party delivery because it not only allows them to reach customers who, you know, unlike you, may not have the ability to leave their home because they feel, you know, they may be their elderly or immunocompromised or unsafe to do so. You know, or they just, they just prefer the convenience of delivery. So, uh, I appreciate your question, you know, while I'm not in a position to share the percentage, you know, breakdown of this month, this percentage goes towards dashers. What I can say with confidence is that is, it is by far the largest portion of the fees we collect. It is really important to us that dashers are able to maintain a flexible and significant source of earnings through the DoorDash platform. It's what keeps them, you know, happy on the platform. It allows us to retain really top-quality dashers. And it's just part of our value proposition to the entire community is that it provides this outlet for restaurants to reach customers, but it provides this flexible source of earnings for people who may have lost their job or, you know, would like a supplemental source of income.
Of course, it has to make sense for everyone. What, what would you say, uh, would, um, be maybe an unintended consequence if we had a cap for the, the dashers without breaking down any percentages? Uh, I'm guessing they would have a lesser portion of, of, uh, a profit?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if, you have to think about it as like money in, money out. And the money that's coming in is largely going to them. If there's less money in, there could potentially be less money going to them. I can say just with a lot of confidence that dashers are very, very concerned about this. In cities that have considered this, where we've asked dashers to write to lawmakers, there have been cities that have, you know, considered a cap at the mayoral level. There have been cities that have considered a cap at the county or at the council level. And where we've asked dashers to weigh in, they have weighed in, in droves and provided a ton of anecdotal evidence for why they rely on the source of income, literally begging their council members not to take the source of earnings away from them. In New York alone, we had three thousand dashers write in to their council members and to the mayor when we asked them to. And that was within a few hours of asking them to because they were just so struck that the council would consider taking an action that would hamper our ability to collect fees that largely go to them, right, to keep them afloat. So I share that just as a way of saying, you know, I know that that sentiment exists across the board. That's not unique to New York or, you know, Chicago or other places where we've asked dashers to speak up in this way. Um, and I do feel like San Jose dashers, you know, some of them come from San Jose. Most of them are from within the city limits. These are your residents, you know, these are your, these are your constituents. These are folks who, like I said, may, may have been laid off or furloughed or, are just looking for an extra source of money because they're not getting the hours they need. And, and that's who we're really concerned with upholding in addition to the mom and pop restaurants.
Sure. Th- thank you for that. So I, I would, uh, um, like for us to come back and, and if we could, uh, Mayor, include that in maybe in your discussions as you're talking to, to the different companies. And also, uh, when we take this back to council, that we don't ask staff to, to produce a whole ordinance before we get a chance to really talk about it. I think it was, it would be premature, but I think, uh, once you have a conversation, Mayor, with, um, the heads of the, the industry here, I'd probably be a lot more ready in terms of an ordinance than I think at this point. Because at this point, I think it's still, uh, a, a level of discussion. And I know that staff is working quite a bit on a lot of things that we're asking them to do. And so asking them to, uh, spend some time in the ordinance before we have a discussion is, um, doesn't make really good use of their time, I think. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, yeah?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I, I'll before the council or before the Rules Committee votes, let me just want to address two things that I heard during the discussion. Vice Mayor Jones was saying we shouldn't have an ordinance or some sort of rule that, uh, would force investors to kind of subsidize business models and such. But, but I would just want to point out that this is the reality. Whether, whether San Jose or other cities regulate at all, the business model as it is, is requiring investors to invest in it, to subsidize it. DoorDash in particular, I think, has been around since 2013. Other companies have been around since, you know, 2014, whatever. The whole business model is burning through venture capital in, to what ends, to what, and to eventually make a profit, but to make a profit by reshaping the market, I believe. Uh, and, and so I am a free marketer as much as anybody. I'll, I'll hold up my bona fides for, against Councilmember Camus and, and anybody who, who is a Republican capitalist or conservative or whatever. I, I'm right there with you. But I, I will point out that there is no market that exists that is not regulated to some extent. And the question that I'm putting before the council is, should we regulate and to what extent? Because I feel like the, the comment earlier that was made, that we need to preserve this current ecosystem to ensure that people are fed, I think, I, I don't quite agree with that because people are being fed. This, the ecosystem here is, it's a question of convenience. Yes, there are instances where there are people who are disabled and who can't get out, and I'm very sensitive to that. But there are also people who just couldn't be bothered to put on pants and go get food. And, and, and to, to, for those people, like if you want food brought to your home, then, you know, pay the fee to get the food brought to your home, twenty-seven dollars an hour. That's on you. It is not by any means that like if this, these, these food delivery services don't get, don't continue, that people are going to be starving in the streets. It, as a matter of fact, if, if we were to just go directly into the restaurants and just stand in line, stay six feet apart, the, the restaurants would get the full fee of the burger or the pizza or whatever we're buying. And I'm sure that they would be much happier if we are buying directly from them rather than going through third-party apps and sharing their profit. Because at the end of the day, in my view, just one person's view, the, the genius of the app is that when you have people around the country, around the city with an app on your phone, ready to go, then this is convenient. And then if you're a restaurant, you're not on the app, you're not seen, you're not going to be able to sell your food and, and whatever, because you're not on the app. So you want to get on the app. And once everyone is on the app, there is this market that has leverage over the restaurants. It's like we have reality TV shows now that still exist because the two thousand and seven writer's strike in Hollywood made it that shows just happened to have, you know, be unscripted. And now we're stuck with like The Bachelor or whatever, uh, because there was a time when people couldn't be written. And so this is what I'm talking about and just-
Try to reel this back in, Councilmember.
All right, I'll just, like, let me just share the screen real quick, uh, if I can do this. And just so you can get a sense of why I was curious about getting into this, this area. Can you see this?
Yes.
So this is, this is something that was going off the internet. And just so you can see, this is not DoorDash, this is Grubhub, but they did forty-six orders, a thousand dollars in profit. But at the end of the day, the restaurant got three hundred and seventy-six dollars out of it. So this is what we're dealing with. Maybe not in San Jose, but this is, this is something that's out there. So this is why I wanted to get involved in, in regulating this.
Can you tell us where this is from?
I, I picked this, huh?
Where is this from?
I, I picked this off of people talking off the social, off Twitter. So, so I, I can't, I'm not saying this is out of San Jose, but I'm just saying this is an, an instance of one company, you know, taking fees and commissions that ends up, I think, taking a, a huge chunk from what would otherwise go to the restaurant itself.
Okay. All right. So understand you're not pretending that it's scientific data or-
No, I'm not saying this is San Jose. This is happening in our area. I'm just saying this is off, somebody put up their, their statement out of frustration and I'm just sharing it.
Okay.
So that's all. I'd like to unshare this.
You're back. Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, so, uh, Maria, thank you for your, uh, your insights. And we'll certainly engage with you and other colleagues of yours in the industry and try to see where there's room, if any, to, to be able to move forward something like this. At least that's the direction of the motion if that's approved. Any final comments? I see someone has just raised their hand in the public. Jason Alred?
Yes, this is Jason Alred. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, thanks for giving me the time. Just quick, um, I'm the owner of Henry's World Famous Highlight in downtown San Jose. So, uh, yeah. So, uh, talking about, uh, this issue, if you guys want to talk to someone in the industry restaurant, I'm available. Nate has my information. If you want to get ahold of me, I'd love to talk to you about it. But, um, I think we're talking about pre-COVID nineteen and the current situation. So pre-COVID nineteen, you know, these fees that, uh, delivery services want to charge, that's an option for a restaurant. You can or, or don't have to do it, right? But right now, this is kind of our only option, right, or one of very few options. And so, uh, looking at the fees and maybe regulating them is something that we should really look at in, in the situation for now and only for temporary. Like when this is over, right, we can go back to where it was before if we need to. But as a restaurant, we kind of have a choice right now. So I just want to put that out there. And, um, also deferring it, it makes sense because you want to have the right information. But I think the longer we wait to defer this, if we're going to do something, keep in mind, the restaurants have been doing, uh, this for a few weeks already and a lot of them are hurting. And a lot of them are close to shutting down. So any kind of relief that they can get, whether it's even a few dollars on fees, situations like that, it's going to help. So, uh, just, that's all I want to say. And, uh, thanks for the time.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks for the great ribs and chicken. Um, I believe, uh, Mr. Beekman, so, so on?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, this was an interesting, uh, topic for me to learn about today. And, uh, you know, you, you're, you're trying to get, uh, into the process of talking about, uh, you know, economic models. And, uh, I'm, you know, I come from the philosophy at a time like this, how can we keep prices down and, uh, as, as low as possible to, to ride through this time period? And, uh, the last, the last, uh, public speaker was, was interesting, uh, the restaurant owner. You know, I, maybe with the guidelines that, uh, you can create as a city at this time, maybe that can set a standard and a pace that, uh, you know, that both restaurants and DoorDash can follow and give them a regulatory model. And, you know, I, that, that can go a long way. And, um, so I guess that's about all I have to say on this item. Uh, I'm trying to learn how to relax and just simply, uh, speak, uh, you know, speak more my casual mind. And so I guess about covers things for now. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, back to the committee on the motion from Vice Mayor Jones. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, hands raised. Forgive me. Councilmember Renus? No, Councilmember?
Thank you. Um, I will not be supporting the motion. I, I agree with the, the owner of Henry's High Life that taking action sooner rather than later would be better. I don't think we need to wait to come back to rules in two weeks. I would rather it went to council in two weeks. Um, and if that was the motion on the floor, I would support it. I think our businesses are hurting, our restaurants are hurting. We're going to talk about another initiative, mayor, that you and I proposed for just that purpose. This is another thing that we can do, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Reyes, forgive me. I cut you off. We tried, no, okay. Okay. Any other comment? All right then, on, uh, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Jones's motion to defer a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Arenas?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Camus?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Luccardo?
Hi. Okay, we'll take on this hot potato in a couple of weeks. Thanks, everybody. Back to, uh, let's see here, item four is the San Jose Alfresco proposal. And I'll go first to members of the public on this item, and then we'll come back to the committee. Nate LeBlanc?
Hello again, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to hear public comment on this very important issue. Mayor, we, as the San Jose Downtown Association, gratefully took place in the press conference last week and are actively supporting your memo to allow for use of the public right of way to give businesses space to conduct their operations safely during this pandemic. What, what we need to begin discussing today, and I know that you're here to do is the how and the when and the where and the why. And, um, at least in the downtown area, what we really want to push for you guys to consider is, uh, having as much of as possible by right. And it, in particular, to, uh, consider the totality of the issue for, um, the restaurant industry in particular. Taking sidewalk space as long as there's room for pedestrians to go seems to be easily enough to consider, but closing streets and having them monitored and, uh, kind of extending premises, particularly for alcohol are extremely thorny issues that need to be considered. And we're going to need strong leadership in order to do so. So, uh, we support your memo. We support the idea behind this. And what we really need to see is a quick consideration of how this can be implemented safely and how we're actually going to do this. And in the downtown area in particular, again, just uh, want to avoid lengthy permit processes, expensive permit processes, and, um, people needing to buy new equipment such as fencing or, um, velvet ropes or what have you to maintain their premises. We need to do this with what's available on hand as quickly as humanly possible. And we thank you for your leadership in putting this forward.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm unable to see a participant list right now because the screen seems to be jammed up. Uh, Jason Alred?
Hello again, uh, Jason, uh, owner of Henry's World Famous High Life. Thanks, everyone, for the time. It's great to see you all. Uh, I just want to give you a little perspective from, uh, food service business on this. Based on some of the guidelines we've seen come out of California and other states for reopening the economy, and how the issue of outside service is going to be critical, a critical option for restaurants and bars in the near future. Not all restaurants have large spaces or square footage like us. And so social distancing inside is not going to be a viable option. It's an almost certainty that, uh, restaurants and bars will not be back to normal capacity anytime soon. And normal capacity is what we need, what restaurants and bars need to stay in business. And if our out, if our indoor capacity is limited, which it most certainly will be, we will need to be able to serve outside. The process of getting permission to do this via permits can take months sometimes, weeks or months sometimes, and we need it to be by right. And we need to be by right, so it's immediate. Um, if a restaurant or bar owns or leases the property or for serving food and drink, they should be able to serve outside as soon as the city, uh, gives the order that restaurants can open for dining. It needs to be immediate. Uh, and this includes alcohol sales. And this is important because, uh, alcohol sales are so important to the, to the success of restaurants and bars. The city will need to address this with the ABC, no doubt. So that no one's at risk of losing their license for serving outside of normal parameters like the sidewalk or parking lots. And, uh, we can't be expected to rent or erect fences or barriers, um, because we don't have the money to pay for it. Alcohol sales are incredibly important to us, and so serving outside must include alcohol. The margins on food are not enough to keep us going on a limited capacity basis. Keeping in mind that most restaurants have been operating on food margins only and significantly reduced revenues for, for months now. So outside seating options and outside alcohol sales will be critical for restaurants and their ability to survive the next few months. And, uh, if we want to get our bars and restaurants back up to full capacity quickly, outside seating will almost certainly do this in many cases. Uh, thanks. That's all I have. Eddie Trong?
Thank you, Mayor Luccardo and Councilmember Davis, for your leadership in putting forth the San Jose Alfresco memo, uh, forward. My name is Eddie Trong, Director of Government Relations at the Silicon Bay Organization. We are the region's Chamber of Commerce, representing the interests of over 1,200 businesses in the region. Again, I wanted to relay our strong support of this memo. Uh, first of all, thank you to the mayor and to Councilmember Davis for your proactive, uh, and visionary position in terms of, uh, preparing the city of San Jose's local restaurant businesses to operate safely once sheltering place, um, orders have been relaxed. Uh, we know this would use that when shelter in place is relaxed, um, that our restaurants will still be operating at likely 50% or less capacity for dine-in options. And so the city of San Jose has a really great opportunity to be proactive in this way. Uh, we missed an opportunity not too long ago, just a few weeks ago, when the city could have been doing inspections and allowing construction sites to proceed once the, uh, public health guidelines have been met. That's not this is opportunity now and for the city to meet your, um, your proactive position now and to do the work, um, to allow restaurants to operate by right and to be able to, uh, continue as soon as county public health, um, department has issued the green light for our restaurants to be able to safely reopen. Thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Thank you. There's a caller who's got an area code 916. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor Luccardo. It's Katie Hanson with the California Restaurant Association. And it's a pleasure to address you and the fellow rules committee members. The Alfresco Dining Proposal is in alignment with the California Restaurant Association's recommendations for reopening neighborhood restaurants. Creating additional creative outdoor dining spaces will be necessary to ensure proper physical distancing procedures during this pandemic through the greater use of outdoor public space. The proposal addresses and seeks to eliminate the financial burdens of application costs and waive permitting fees to allow for outdoor dining. And this is a critical aspect of helping San Jose restaurants reopen in this tough time. We respectfully request a vote in support of the dining proposal today. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Huttonhoff. Michelle, could you remove yourself from mute? We're not able to hear you yet. Okay, Michelle, you've put your hand down. Unless I see your hand go up, I'm going to assume that you did not want to speak on this item. Perhaps it was on a different item. Uh, so, oh, your hand is back up now, Michelle. Could you unmute yourself? Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, sorry about that. Um, my name is Michelle Huttonhoff. I'm the Policy Director for Place Making in Public Life Whisper. We are absolutely thrilled with this program. We think it's going to be really transformational in the city, not only during this time as we move back online through this pandemic, but really as a way to manifest a lot of the work that the city's been doing around public life over the past several years. We really urge, uh, that this type of initiative is casted citywide. Many of our small businesses are located in very distinct neighborhoods in the community that could benefit from this type of intervention. But we also recommend that this be packaged with a few other measures. And in our outreach in the community, we've heard two things. One, that businesses need flexibility and they need additional space. And so we've submitted a letter that outlines additional measures we think could be beneficial from creating business recovery zones, reducing fees and allowing for implicit temporary uses, analyzing capping delivering fees, which you've all discussed prior, and then rethinking parks and parking lots to serve as multi-use spaces. And so we look forward to the conversation and are here to partner and support this work, um, throughout the next several months. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And thanks for your and SPUR's partnership on this. All right, we'll come back to the committee and, um, just want to first acknowledge that this is not by any means a new idea. It's something that people like Blagay, Zalalich and, and Kim Wallace and many others in the city have been working on, that we hears about how we can better utilize, uh, our public space and bring people outdoor. Uh, it just so happens, this is an emergency when it becomes more of an imperative for, uh, businesses to be able to bring commerce outdoors. And I think there's a bit of an opportunity perhaps in this crisis as well for us to, to think a little differently. I, I appreciate the input from several members of our community about the desire to have by right access. And obviously, that won't be possible if we're talking about closing streets. But perhaps, uh, with some, uh, some of the more modest, uh, opportunities, for example, to use, private, uh, parking spaces in parking lots, for example, in a strip mall wherever, you know, those are the kinds of things that hopefully we might be able to get to, uh, simply some, some by right, uh, access to really relieve burden within City Hall and relieve the burden on businesses to have to, to, to deal with applications and delays and, and obviously fees. So recognize that there's a desire, I think, all around to find an easy way forward for folks, although there are undoubtedly going to be conflicts and as there always are in the use of public space. As long as we have 19-year-olds speeding along on scooters, uh, we're going to have safety concerns about how people use the space and may have to manage it very carefully. So, um, why don't I go first to, let me ask, Dave or Kim, did you want to jump in before we go to the committee?
No, I think we're good. You know, I think this is obviously COVID-related, so, um, and so we're supportive of, of, of bringing this forward and doing the work associated with it. I know Kim and Blagay have already spent some time on it and have some thoughts about it. So, um, look forward to sharing those with you.
Okay, great. And, uh, we of course are fortunate to benefit from partnerships like, uh, SPUR and Downtown Association. I think there's going to be a lot of ideas about helping us identify the ideal geographies to be able to start and make this relatively easy on folks. Uh, Councilmember Davis, thank you for your work on this memo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to clear up one thing before I go into my comments because I've gotten some emails about this. And it is that we are just trying to have, uh, staff and, and all of us in the city be ready for when Dr. Cody allows businesses to be open again. There were some comments that I got over email. I don't know if you did as well, mayor. Very concerned that we were reopening, uh, businesses too early with this memo, and this is not what we were intending. So I just want to be clear, I know all my colleagues understand that, but I want to make sure that the public understands that we, we at the city know that we are not the people who decide when businesses can reopen, but we are in charge of land use and we want to make sure that we are ready and the staff is ready with policies to be put in place so that businesses can reopen and be profitable again. Um, so I just wanted to make that completely clear because, uh, there, there was some confusion about that, I think, when people read in the paper about it. But I, I am so grateful already to the enthusiastic response from, from city staff. I heard from a few city staff, uh, even last week and earlier this week, that they were already talking about this and trying to figure out how it might work. And I know that there were, there, I spoke with some business owners already on Lincoln Avenue in my district, and they're also already kicking around ideas and have ideas on how this might work in their areas. So I'm hoping that we can have engagement very, very early so that we can kind of build in the flexibility and not have to take things case by case, um, or area by area, but that we can have staff directly working with our business owners as they're crafting the recommendations for us so that we can have it kind of all, all ready to go when, when the businesses are ready to be open.
Thank you, Councilmember Camus.
Well, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I had to say hallelujah again. There's two weeks in a row, mayor, uh, for memos that you're involved with. I have, I have, um, been talking about this for quite some time, ever since I've been in office. And think, in fact, I've been asking Angel Rios to allow for our, even our parks to be used for vendors. And, uh, we even had a pilot a while back, but I'm glad that we're going down this direction. Anything that we could do to help these businesses stay afloat, um, and allow people to use, to enjoy some of the outdoors. I also don't want this to be limited to downtown. I think there's a lot of areas in my district that could be, uh, benefit from this ordinance. Um, you know, maybe take away two parking spots out of a big, you know, um, parking lot area. And I, I'd love to see it expanded past downtown. I, I, my, that's my only, my only comment is I don't want to see that, uh, you know, just for downtown. Yeah, sorry.
Well, certainly not our intention. We, we do expect this to be citywide. And, you know, as Joel, a member of our team, commented to me, it may be the easiest place to, to do this would be in a strip mall. Uh, and, and, you know, places like downtown have a lot of conflicts in public space, but obviously it's a place that's critical for us to be able to get people outdoors. So, so we do want it to be citywide. And, and I think, uh, we're going to find opportunities both downtown and throughout the city.
Yeah, no, I think strip malls are perfect. I mean, that, yeah, right next to your dry cleaners, your sushi place, you can sit down and in any case, um, well, and, um, I really like the fact that, uh, Councilmember Davis, uh, Dev, you, you, I did get a lot of phone calls, when can I do this, you know? And so, um, let, you know, I told him to slow down, the county has to approve it. So, I don't, have you made a motion yet?
I didn't. Move, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Other comments? Kim Blagay, I realized, I, I don't think I allowed you guys to jump in. Was, is anything you wanted to add or any words of warning?
No, just, we're totally on board with this opportunity. And just a really bright spot is we already had a great conversation with the State Director of ABC, and it was very positive. I mean, he's generally inclined to continue to allow these relaxed regulations, um, concerning alcohol sales with restaurants, even if we bring it outside. So, um, we're, we're really excited about this.
That's happy news. I thought ABC would be particularly challenging, given our past experience. So that's great news. Councilmember Reyes?
I have a question. I, I'm really excited about this too. So congratulations, Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Davis. This is absolutely in line with our, our wonderful California weather. So I'm excited because we don't get a lot of these, um, outdoor, uh, businesses or outdoor seating, uh, for our strip mall type of businesses. And so I'm really excited about this. How is this going to work with our storefront grant? I guess first of all, is our storefront grant, uh, still going to be up and running? And how is that going to work with that?
I suspect we'll decide in June, huh?
I hope it doesn't go away and, and that way it can work in conjunction. I know in our, uh, Village Square, we were able to get a couple of storefront grants for some of our new businesses. And so I know this is for like the permits, the cafe permits and fees, but I think it would be a great idea if we could marry those two things. Um, and then that way they can also, uh, we can help absorb some of those fees.
I, I know the city manager's proposed budget just came out this morning or last night, so I can't recall honestly whether it's in there or not.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. Um, so we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that. I, I can't tell you right now whether that's in there or not. So we'll, we'll look at that. And, and I think we can marry up at least the discussion and figure it that out.
Awesome, awesome. I'm also excited, um, that this is going to be citywide. I know that, that, uh, everybody loves to congregate, including myself, um, actually in D six, in D six in downtown Willa Glen and in downtown area. But we want that in all of our districts, um, and so that it's accessible for everybody to enjoy the nice weather and a really good, uh, meal. By the way, I went to a keys in, uh, D two, I think it was D two. And, uh, they were, they were, uh, offering me to, uh, a swirl, which is, you know, their famous, uh, margarita flavored drinks on a to-go basis. Like you could walk outside. on a to-go basis. Like you could walk outside with it. And I thought, well, this is very, very strange, but I'll take a swirl, make it watermelon. So I look forward to being able to do that and with the meals sitting down. So congratulations. This is a great, great proposal.
Yes, to go swirl is saving the mental health of our city, apparently. Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, I want to make a correction. You had the keys in District 10, not District 2. We actually, it's across the border.
You mean on Blossom Hill?
Yes.
Is that D 10?
Yes, it is. That's D 10.
There is one on Lincoln Avenue, however.
But I also, I, I do also want to potentially address the, the allowing people to take home things such as these swirls past this lightning because I think a lot of the businesses that can, that has specialty cocktails would benefit from staying in business as well. You know, past this, when we start reopening some of this, I think they'll still need to have that temporary moratorium that allows them to deliver alcoholic beverages. So I don't, I don't know if that could be thought about as well.
Okay. Well, there's going to be a lot of challenging issues, I know, with this one. And I'm hoping that we're going to be able to take this in something of a two-step. There's going to be lower hanging fruit that we hope we can do relatively easy. And we know that there's a lot of really hard stuff because we've gone through a little bit of it before with our, our parklets or whatever we're calling these things now that have emerged in our parking spaces where we're allowing decks and outdoor dining. There's just a lot of challenges in the public space. So, you know, it may be a whole lot easier for us just to decide to close down entire lanes of traffic if, than rather than really grappling with all of these unique challenges. So well, I guess we'll learn a lot in the weeks ahead. Okay. Any last questions or comments? Okay, let's vote then on Councilmember Davis's motion.
Breenus?
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Camus?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Licardo?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And finally, oh, no, two more items. I'm sorry. Monthly report of activities, Joe.
Hello, Joe Royce, City Auditor. I don't have a lot to report on. So this is our monthly report for April. As you know, a number of our projects have been in progress for a little bit, and many of them were slated to come out in the springtime. But no, we're still working with departments and trying to wrap those up and pending capacity within the departments and the city manager's office. Try feedback responsibly. We're getting those out at some point. We, it's, it's, it's kind of to be determined as easy can imagine. Without asking, except for report and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions for Joe? Councilmember Camus, any questions for our bearded auditor?
I think he needs a, a visit to a hair salon, but.
I like it. It's a good look.
Shag your every day.
I prefer the clean shaved look myself. But anyway, first of all, thank you, Joe, for adding the emergency management team into the, the agenda. It's important that the city gets all the reimbursements possible to prevent further impacts of COVID-19s on the, on the general fund. So thank you for doing that. But do you envision adding other audits, assignments related to COVID-19s, such as assessing service delivery for housing, meals, that kind of stuff?
Right now, we're taking a wait and see. We added this one project. It's, it's pretty much in line with our, our role in the emergency operations plan. We'll probably do a series of audits in that area, looking at kind of those costs. But we could potentially look into some of these, these other audit, audits as well. We're kind of like everybody else. We're kind of stretched with capacity just because about half our offices moved or not. A number of people in our office have moved into other disaster service worker roles, working in with the logistics team or working with nonprofit assistance group and things of that nature. So we've got about three folks working on the COVID-19 documentation audit. Probably could free up a few more for a bit more audit work, but it's really just working with, you know, the E S C folks, figuring out where we can add the most value.
Yeah, that, that's, that's where I was going. I just want to make sure that we can get reimbursed to, to, to as much extent as we could with the dollars that we have. And if we need to prioritize it, then you have my blessings if, if you need it.
Okay, yeah. So any, any additional work I'll be bringing to, you know, I come to you all each month. I could add additional work as, as necessary.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion to approve the report.
Second.
Thank you. Hey, Joe, my recollection, specifically auditor's team is very heavily involved in the reimbursement process. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so appreciate that. It's going to consume an awful lot of your time, not just now, but for quite a while. For those assignments that are in process, like fleet maintenance, park maintenance, police staffing, obviously, when you undertook those projects, you operate a very different set of assumptions than we have today about our staffing and our ability.
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity in all of this to sort of bridge in a pivot on the focus? I know, you know, it's all around efficiency, but now efficiency is going to be viewed in a world of, of less rather than the same capacity. Is that something you can incorporate into those audits?
That's, that's a great question. So that's one thing we've been looking at is relooking at, you know, some of the recommendations and, and how do they fit within the current budget environment? How do they fit with the current service environment? And some might be a little bit longer term, and some may not make as much sense as they may have in a different world. So we're looking at those. Again, a lot of them recommendations are about prioritization. It's about efficiencies. It's about kind of procedural type things, and they, they still make sense. But we're taking, taking a look, making sure that the recommendations are, they still are practical and in, you know, in, in the sense of what our current environment is.
Okay, thanks, Joe. And I certainly don't want to, anyway, discourage you from deciding you need to pull the plug on something because it just doesn't seem as relevant today's environment. All right, Mr. Beekman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to try to quickly offer that you have technology deployment audit things from your 2016 deployment report, technology deployment report. And, you know, I, I imagine from that, from that report that you, that you used a lot of ideas from the San Jose Sunshine Ordinance of 2007, 2006 and that time. And I'm very sorry that I, you know, in the past previous years, I did not mention the San Jose Sunshine Ordinance enough. And, you know, it's, it's work within, you know, our own city that, you know, it, that's an important piece of work to yourselves. And, yeah, I'm just sorry I did not include that more in, in talking about, you know, all of my hopes for what accountability with technology at this time can be. And, and so there was a good, you know, five or six years that you could practice the Sunshine Ordinance. And with the mayor first, you know, becoming mayor in 2014, that began this new era of technology innovation. And I'm really hoping that there still can be time to meld those early Sunshine Ordinance ideas into, you know, what I'm trying to believe in is that the technology accountability, accountability of this time is really dedicated to ideas of peace and to end, to question shock doctrine practices. And, you know, I think that can be a great combination, how to address our future at this time. And good luck in, in all our work towards the future of accountability with the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Very well. And motion, let's vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Welcome.
All right. Next item, I'm properly attired. It is the emergency mandate of fabric face coverings. Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, you are appropriately covered.
Thank you.
As I go out to go grocery shopping or run essential errands, I'm really struck by the number of people who aren't wearing masks. And I'm not just talking about in the store, but I'm talking about around the stores and where people are congregating. And I just want to see some consistency. All the counties in the Bay Area have mandated face coverings. Certain, a couple of cities in Santa Clara County, Milpitas, Cupertino, and now I just got a notice that Palo Alto has mandated face coverings. So I just want some consistency and some clarity. The county is urging people to have face coverings, but when people hear urge, that implies that they have the option. They, they can make the decision to wear face coverings or not. And I, I want to have, again, some consistency and some clarity in terms of when we go out in public, that there's a comfort level that we know that everybody who could potentially be asymptomatic, but yet contagious, and people who have symptoms are not spreading those, the virus to, to others in the community. We're also talking about opening up, in the process of opening up restaurants and, and businesses. And there's assumption that if we open it, they will come. And I can guarantee you, if there's a segment of the population who, if they do not feel comfortable being in those situations because of a lack of face covering, they're not going to come. And it's going to take longer for our, our economy and our businesses to open up and thrive. So that's why Councilmember Jimenez and I have introduced this memo, and I want to urge the council to, and the rules can be to support it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You know, I didn't say mandate. I said urge.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I support the motion. I've had a chance to, or the memorandum. I've had a chance to talk with county leadership, and I think they're very open to cities moving forward as, as they wish. And I think it makes a lot of sense, given what we're all facing here. There are two members of the public who'd like to speak, one with a phone number ending 4963.
I'd like to give a second to, to Vice Mayor's motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ress. On 4963, you may be on mute. We're not able to hear you yet.
Okay, I shouldn't be on mute now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I strongly support this. I wish it said urge. COVID-19 is having a disparate impact on seniors and on folks of color. And I can tell you that I'm going out, I go out as rarely as I can, and I am absolutely infuriated at the number of people that are walking around without masks. And as far as I'm concerned, they're potential murderers. And I'm using that term advisedly. They're potential murderers. So thank you, Councilperson Jones, for this memo. And I hope that when we do open, the county mandates masks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't screen on the screen. User number two. If you could, at the same time, turn off. Oh, you just hung up, I believe. Okay, we'll wait just a moment, see if they want to reengage. We'll come back to the, the committee and then we'll come back to you, sir or ma'am. And if you're able to get back on, we'll listen to you then. Councilmember Camus.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement too, I have to say, with the memo. I do think it was going to, it's going to be very tough to enforce. And I don't know, especially in our ethnic communities, I think that, that I don't want people to feel, I don't know if it's going to be that enforceable, but I am supportive of it. As, you know, I don't know if, did, if, if Councilmember Jones or Jimenez talked to the police chief to, to get his thoughts or, or ideas? Is there going to be a fine affiliated, for example?
I did talk to the, the chief. As you might guess, he wasn't a big fan of my proposal. But I think it's the right thing to do. And I use the analogy, just like traffic enforcement. We have laws against speeding, but we don't have an expectation that we're going to have police officers spending, you know, the majority of their time going after people who are speeding. Oftentimes, we make laws to keep honest people honest. So the vast majority of the people, if they know it's a mandate, will do the right thing anyway. And then if you have a situation where you have an egregious offense, say you have somebody without a mask that's in the face of grandma, then that might be an opportunity to, for the police to intervene. So it would be situational. But we want to, want to keep honest people honest and have everybody comply with, with the laws. And if, again, if you have individuals who are flouting the laws or intentionally not complying, then, then that's an opportunity for the police to intervene.
No, understood. But I, the person in grandma's face could be grandson. And, you know, that, that's a lot more difficult than a cut and dry case, like a speeding ticket. So I, while, while I will support this, I feel that it could be, actually could be used against some people too. But in any case, I, there could be some unintended consequences, but I will support it.
And Mayor, if I could just share a little perspective, I think, so certainly we've talked it through. Police Department does have quite a few concerns about the, the practicality of implementation and enforcement. I do have a request. You know, the way the memo is structured, it, it, it's directing us to issue an emergency order. I think this is better suited to going to council for, for council approval rather than typically, we wouldn't issue an emergency order without a, an compliance plan and so forth. So I think it's better suited to go to council.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay, I can make that modification and have it go to council for the 19th.
Okay, is that okay with Councilmember Ress?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great. Blair Beekman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly ask, thank you that you would, you'd be willing to bring this to council. And if you do, I bet.
Speaker, we seem to have lost you.
Hi, whoops, sorry about that. It, it's short. I guess I'll just start again. You know, I thank you for allowing the, for this to go to council. And when it does, can you, can you, can, can someone from the council, can it be explained exactly why Santa Clara County has opted not to have the mask system mandatory, whereas every other county of the Bay Area has? And what are the reasons behind exactly why, why that is? Is it farm reasons? Or I don't know what it can be, but if you could explain that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Speaker. Okay. Yeah, I think we all have our eyes wide open about the enforcement challenges here, particularly given all that we're dealing with.
Mayor, just for clarification on the motion, the, if it goes to council, is this just for discussions of whether you want us to bring back an ordinance?
I guess, I guess we'd want to have an ordinance to issue, wouldn't we?
Well, yeah, I mean, you've got the 19th, and then if, the next time you can take action is in June. So if you wanted an urgency ordinance, we'd have to get something on the agenda for next Tuesday. And, yeah, that's, that's, you know, if, if you're not going to issue it by order, we'd have to be ready to go.
Okay, what if I throw out this suggestion, given the challenges? I'm guessing you guys have a real workload constraint in trying to get an ordinance ready.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what, how much this would take, but, you know, it, it just, I want to make sure I understand council's direction. These, right now, the county order shelter in place at least goes to the 31st.
Vice Mayor, let me just ask, would it be all right if we simply took this to the council for a vote in terms of defining the outlines of this order? I know there probably is variations out there that we'll want to talk about on the dais and then allow the ordinance to come back. I'm a little concerned about us trying to race off because I know that there's already fights over whether or not, you know, joggers have to wear masks when they're out jogging and things of that nature. And I'm not sure that Rick's going to have all the guidance to just assume what we want.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. In, in most of the mandates, they have exemptions for hiking, jogging, riding your bike. In, in most of the mandates, they have exemptions for hiking, jogging, riding your bike.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty standard. Okay, so we'll go back, if, if the council directs then next Tuesday, we would bring an ordinance back on the second.
Well, you know, Vice Mayor, if you're convinced that we, we have a pretty standard set of ordinances out there, we could simply cut and paste here and at least bring something that's already written before the, before the council to consider. That, is that something you'd want to try to do to identify an ordinance that's there?
Definitely, if, if that's something that Rick can get back. Oh, let us look at it and we'll say, considerate, we'll, we'll agenda it for consideration of the emergency ordinance.
All right.
Or approval and whether we have it. The only thing I'd say is something may not get out until Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, understood. All right, well, if there's something that could, it's cut and paste, great. And if this is something that requires an awful lot of debate and discussion, then obviously we'd have you come back.
All right, all right.
Great, thank you.
All right, on the motion then, from Vice Mayor Jones, any other comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Are there any opposed, objections? Okay, that passes then unanimously. Thank you. We're on to open forum. Mr. Beekman?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, check, maybe I'll say check, check from now on. Thank you. Tough closing speech today. In San Jose and across the country, a narrative is developing that the, this pandemic is somehow the fault only of China and the WHO. With this thinking, the U.S. has been trying to practice a new round of warfare around the world at this time. As we are now in our third month of what may be at least a 24-month pandemic, at some point, it will have to be taken into account that the U.S. has possibly had some sort of important supporting role in how this pandemic has started. And that people in other countries will have to be held accountable and not willing to work through long-term negotiations and continual impasse. Can responsible vaccination processes from many different countries be ready soon? And cut through the bureaucratic media, the bureaucratic and media red tape of the nations of the world? And what is the current state of the COVID-19 variation clotting the blood of children and young people? These are issues that need to be worked out between us. I feel with help from technology accountability practices and other human rights ideas, for the U.S. at this time to better acknowledge their own large roles in 9/1101 and the economic meltdown of 2008, it would naturally invite China, the WHO and others, what could be their own more positive long-term sustainability practices? And I think you would hear a collective sigh of relief, not only from San Jose, but from other local communities and, and local governments from around the world as well, if we were to all work on our good practices and good ideals. Thanks a lot for the meeting today. It was, it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And the individual calling from phone number 4963, you have the number ending 4963, please unmute yourself.
Yes, the office of the city clerk is perhaps the most, one of the most important offices down at City Hall. Citizens, commissioners and council members are dependent on the city clerk's office to get the right advice or the, consequences can be devastating, as we saw with the council person, Man Nguyen, and as we're currently seeing with the issue of the ballots. Also, they're supposed to serve the public and the public is not supposed to be serving them. For six years, I have filed Form 700 in paper, both for computer reasons and for visual reasons. Have, have a visual problem and generally deal in paper and not sitting in front of a computer. So I went down on the 12th of February to fill out the paper, as I've been doing for six years. The person who was assigned to the task was very angry. I came out and said she wanted me to file instead on the computer. I told her there had been problems in the past, but I let her bully me into attempting it. The attempt failed, we kept getting error messages. So I asked for the paperwork, I filled it out, I turned it in, and I got a stamp. Now I'm informed, 13 weeks later, that the city clerk's staff person gave me the wrong form. And I'm supposed to be doing this online. So I have a real issue about the city clerk's office giving out the wrong forms, failing to respond to emails when I emailed repeatedly and asked for help. And it was only today, when I again asked what was going on, that I'm told, we gave you the wrong form, sorry. Well, I understand that the clerk regrets it, but there has to be more accountability in that office, because the consequences for, for, for members of the public, commissioners and council members who are given the wrong information is huge. So I'll be dealing with, with the clerk offline and I'll also be calling the Fair Political Practices Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.